Hello, hello.
August 19th, 2020, Thurston County Planning Commission meeting to order will begin with introductions of planning commissioners. Scott Nelson, District 3. Jim?
Jim Simmons, District 3.
Donna?
I thought I was District 3, but how many? Okay, sure, then, yeah, District 3.
Ed?
The others, I didn't think.
You're muted, Ed.
Ed Fleischer, District 2.
Don?
And Don DeHan, District 1.
Eric?
Eric Casino, District 2.
Doug?
Doug Carmen, District 2.
And that looks like everybody. Did I miss anyone? Okay, can I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So move.
And second.
Hey, any changes? All those in favor of approving the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes from August 5th, 2020 and accept the audio as the official record?
So move.
And second.
Okay, any changes? Okay, all those in favor of approving the minutes from August 5th, 2020 and accepting the audio as the official record, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, now we're gonna open it up to public communications. I just wanna say we have two public hearings tonight, so if you're wishing to speak on one of those, please wait until you, until we open those hearings. Also, we did have a hearing on ADUs, I believe, that we have not made a decision on, so we can't take any testimony on that issue. So, Paulie, I think you have our first person.
Mr. Durker? Okay. Okay, your three minutes is starting right now if you wanna start talking.
This is a point of order requesting that the introduction.
I can't hear anything.
Not by the microphone.
I heard it better when it was by you, Paulie.
Okay, Paulie, I'm gonna ask you to stop him because we can't hear him.
Okay, stop, Mr. Durker, they can't hear you.
We can hear him better now when he's away from the microphone.
Oh, you can? Oh.
It's really not clear.
Oh, I can't hear anything at all. I can't comprehend it.
This is, it's unintelligible.
I mean, I have no idea what he's saying.
Mr. Durker, they're not able to hear you. Mr. Durker, they're not able to hear you with your public comments, but we, you did send in a written comment to this effect as well, right?
There are not this part of it, I think we only put this very part, not a small part.
Yeah, do you call it a night?
Yeah, they can't. It's just not coming through that way.
No, this doesn't.
Do you wanna pick up and try to call into the meeting?
Aye, aye, aye.
So, Paulie, I'll let you see if you can figure that out, and we'll move on to Jeff Merriman.
Hello, so I have a question. Since you haven't done anything on the ADUs yet, are you gonna open that up to some more public comment before you make a decision later on in the meeting?
No, we closed the public hearing last week.
Okay, I was just wondering about that. I do wanna thank you guys for asking so many questions about the FMU part of the ADUs and.
We, I mean, this, we cannot take comment even if it's.
I love thanking you guys for doing your job. That's all I wanna say. Just thank you very much for asking questions. That's all.
Okay, thank you. Does anybody else wish to speak on a planning commission topic in general? Okay, I'll ask, Paulie, do we have, are you able to get that going or do we need to wait till later?
I can do the timer.
I'm talking about Mr. Durker. Are you able to get that working?
He isn't able to call in, he said, and I have him on the phone still, he's talking.
Okay, so, let's move on to our work session for development code docket A21 accessory dwelling units.
Evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Bond with Community Planning. I'm just gonna dive right into the memo that we published earlier this week regarding some of the questions that we received at the last meeting on August 5th. So let's just dive right in. There were three questions asked of staff. One pertained to parking standards. The second was the sequence of buildings for an accessory dwelling unit and a principal structure. And the third was the conversion of an FMU to an ADU. So, more or less, let's just start with the parking standards. Part of staff's initial analysis was the four peer counties located in attachment D, Washington's ADU county comparison chart, as well as took a look at the four urban growth areas in five cities located within Thurston County. All of the jurisdictions, with the exception of Watcom County, required a minimum of one parking stall. A little more information from this past legislative session, on June 11th, Senate Bill 6617 prohibited cities from requiring off-street parking for ADUs that were located within one-quarter mile of a major transit stop. There were some exceptions, and one of those was if the city had made substantial amendments to the ADU regulations within the last four years or if the general area surrounding the ADU, so the physical space or the on-street area, was not adequate. The city could require parking if they had evidence to support that. So part of staff's taking a look at the ADU was, we kind of threw out three options for the planning commission to consider. Option 1 was to maintain the existing code language that incorporates the accessory dwelling unit into the parking and loading chapter and require one parking stall. Option 2 was to remove the parking requirement in its entirety for an ADU. Or option 3 was to make an amendment to the existing access section within the ADU chapter to include parking and essentially say ADU parking facilities can be incorporated into the existing parking facilities or shared with the principal structure. This section does not require an off-street parking facility to be constructed. And I guess, going to the board, I don't know if we wanna tackle each one individually, or do you want me to continue through and then just go one at a time?
Just once reminded, this, this code we're dealing with here is only gonna apply outside the urban growth areas, right?
That's correct.
Okay, thanks.
Do we wanna take a stab at looking at the options now, or do you want me to continue on?
I don't see anything wrong with taking them one at a time and completing them as we go.
Yeah, that's, that's what I would suggest.
Okay, so does anyone have any questions on any of the options included within the memo? Does someone want to lean the group in a specific direction?
Um.
Or options?
So, yeah, I was just looking at this and so 2044, if I read it right, when I saw it earlier, requires two parking spots for a single dwelling unit, correct?
That's correct.
And two parking spots for a two-family unit.
I don't know that one specifically, but most likely, yes. So, really, it would just be two for the principal structure and then there would be one additional. The one thing to keep in mind with the addition within option 3, most parking situations, they include a garage. And so the stacking off of that garage is an option, as well as the driveway, excuse me, for specifically long ones, can count towards the parking spot requirement so long as they meet the dimensional standards required for a parking stall, which, but I think most driveways are built to that minimum. So, just a little more context for option 3.
Anybody have any thoughts?
Interesting question. Is there a downside to option 3?
Not that I can see. I think it allows the flexibility for the property owners to maintain and utilize their existing facilities. But then it doesn't prohibit someone from adding in a parking stall. They still have to meet the impervious surface requirements, but otherwise, it's, it kind of leaves the flexibility with the individual property and the individual context of this ADU.
It seems to me it would have more latitude with option 3.
Yeah.
Wouldn't option 2 give them the most latitude?
Technically, yes, they would not be required to have a parking stall, so.
I think rural areas requiring parking is, is, not only is it not needed, it just makes the county have more work to do to check up on it, and I don't think parking's a real problem out in the county.
As part of the issue, the counting of the impervious surface is that an underlying consideration and requirement that will assume the parking spot will be impervious, and that counts towards the impervious service in that.
Yeah, and so it, they would, any parking situation, regardless of if you guys went with option 3 or option 2, would still need to be permitted and comply with the impervious surface standards. So, if they didn't need to put in a driveway and they choose their existing, it would be the same situation and they would comply based on the original building permit, but if they did decide, even if not required, to put in a parking stall or driveway or whatever situation it is, they would still have to comply with the impervious surface standards. So, it's really just a matter of if you're going to require a parking stall in the code or not. I think either way, you're still gonna have the impervious surface standards that they will be required to follow. And I would think most realistically, people will still have a car and be parking it somewhere on the property. So, it's just kind of a matter of the individual aspects and the individual situations.
Yeah, we're talking rural areas here. I mean, I, 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 I don't know which way to go. I have hard trouble in visualing area, in those zones where you wouldn't have room to park one more car. I mean, I mean, that law, that city law that you mentioned, I mean, that was passed for the cities where, you know.
Yeah, that's correct.
On-street parking's a real problem, but it's not in rural communities, so.
Yeah, it's meant for the urbanized, urbanized areas where there's either a bus or rail and it's constant transit service. And so in these rural areas, it's, it's, it's not necessarily, that bill is context of maybe a general trend that's changing, but it doesn't necessarily apply in this specific context yet, and it may change in the future, but today, it doesn't apply.
So what I hear you saying is with option 2, they don't have to have a parking place, but if they do, it has to meet the existing standards.
Exactly.
So in the interest of moving forward, I would make a motion that we move forward with option 2.
And I'll agree with that.
We have three thumbs up. Anyone else?
Okay.
Four, five, okay, great. It's hard on Zim.
Since we're doing this one at a time, let's go ahead and just, if somebody wants to second Ed or Doug's motion?
I thought Don had.
I did.
I didn't actually second it.
Okay.
He just said he agreed with you.
I'll second it.
Okay, any other discussion? Hey, all those.
What about A1? The option A1.
You mean just op, option 1?
Yeah.
Okay. That's just.
Now what you mean on is option 1, there's no A1.
There's, there's under option 3, there's an A, which is just amending the existing section within the ADU. Option 1 is just maintain it as it currently is written. So do we want to move forward with?
I'll ask again, is, we have a motion, so is there any other, is there any other discussion? Okay, all those in favor of moving forward with option 2, remove the parking requirement for ADUs, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, yeah.
All those opposed? Okay, Andrew, let's go on to sequence.
Okay, so more or less, we took a look into the sequence of buildings and we did reach out to the Development Services staff to see how they would perceive it. They did say that they would be willing to work with individual property owners to help classify an ADU, a, the first structure essentially being the principal structure and then converting one to an ADU and building a new principal structure. And I think this is probably going to be the best course of action, in my opinion. Taking a look at just what Title 20 defines accessory use, which an ADU would be, is an accessory structure that is subordinate and customarily found in association with the principal structure. And so what we'd see here is we'd need to have one set principal structure, even though maybe in five years, 10 years, one year, it's converted to an ADU, we just need to have that first principal structure. And then down the road, whenever that time comes, they could go through the permitting process to essentially flip-flop them. The one thing that would necessarily need to happen is that the property owner would have to be cognizant of their construction and make sure that they are going, they're building their ADU and their future home in alignment to ensure that they comply with the ADU standards. And this coordination, obviously, the permitting staff are here to assist, but it would, more or less, the responsibility would fall to the property owner to plan ahead. Kind of moving down a little bit in a different context, the conversion option would not apply from our perspective because each structure is built as a single dwelling structure and not an accessory structure and would not qualify for the conversion clause within the ADU. The conversion clause really is meant for those, the sheds, barns, your basement, your attic, things like that, where they are just kind of an accessory structure that can be easily flipped and/or flipped to be the ADU. And so that's kind of our response to the sequence of buildings, and I am open for any questions that you guys might have.
So if I understand it correctly, I think that you could have, you could have a conversion, so you could have an ADU on a single-family residential lot or a single-family rural lot. But if you did the two buildings separately, that would not apply. Is that correct?
So if you were to want to technically build the ADU first, you would be building the first principal structure. And when that time comes, you need to essentially reclassify it through the permitting process to an ADU so that you are able to build your new principal structure, because under the current regulations, you cannot have two single-dwelling structures. So you would have to declassify one to an ADU.
So, so this is really just a language thing? We don't wanna use the word conversion when changing an ADU and, or a primary into an ADU?
It's, yes, it's very hard to like explain it without using that word, so you come up with other creative words to describe it.
I like what you're doing. That's great.
It works for me.
Okay.
So, I guess, just thinking about this, I mean, my opinion is, right now, if I wanna build a house, I can always add on to it and then do the ADU, and my concern is, if we do this and somebody's not aware of the language and they build a 1,750-square-foot house, then they come back and say, oh, yeah, I wanna change that to an ADU. Well, they can't because it's over the 1,500-foot limit, if that's what we end up with.
Well, if it was based on a percentage, they'd just have to build a 3,500-square-foot house the second time around.
And it, it ultimately would fall to the responsibility of the property owners to plan ahead.
I, I think that, I think that if we're going to allow this kind of flexibility with it, we have to expect that the, the property owner plans ahead a little bit, and if they don't plan ahead properly, that's kind of on them, but I'd like to give them the option to do it and hopefully they're, they plan ahead well.
Anybody else?
So I don't see the words here for that option other than the paragraph, so.
So there wouldn't be any change. It was kind of a staff recommendation that, more or less, it kind of, that's, this is how we are interpretate, interpreting the code. And so there wouldn't be any sort of actual text that goes with this. It would just be the base, one-on-ones with Development Services to coordinate these kind of future plans. And it's, it's hard to codify within one text for 20 different people with different situations, so we kind of left it open-ended.
Is that something that you can put in some sort of policy language, so five years down the road, when this comes up, it, people are like, well, that's not what we said five years ago?
Absolutely, and we did, I did reach out to the Director of Development Services, and he more or less said that we would just perceive it as one principal structure, and then that time where they decided to build that second one, we would just work with them to reclassify it and go through the necessary permitting to make sure both are legal and they are done.
Awesome, thank you.
Yeah, we are gonna do, on the implementation side, if this makes it all the way through the board approval process and is codified, we're gonna come up with a pamphlet and informational materials to, to help train both our internal planning staff on this new standard and also have the public understand what's possible now. So that's something we can handle at implementation, for sure.
So really, we don't need to make a decision because it's kind of already written in?
It's already possible.
Not make a decision, right?
So the main question to a builder is, who's ever gonna put something on a property, do you plan to have an ADU on this property?
Exactly.
If they say yes, then the options in front of them have to be somewhat visible.
Exactly, we, part of implementation is we can probably, we'll look at it obviously as it comes down, but we can probably create pressures, saying, do you want an ADU? These are the things to think about and how to plan ahead for him.
And that, that works.
This only applies to the 10-acre or more?
I'm sorry?
Where's this? So I know that to build an ADU on a property, you need to have the 10 acres. Is this what?
No, so the, the current rules essentially state that if the ADU is attached through an addition onto the house or a conversion of an existing structure, you are entitled to have an ADU regardless of the density requirements of that district. But if you were going to build a new ADU in your backyard, you would need to have the necessary density, and this would apply regardless of the district. And so let's just say you're in an R1 to 5, you would need 10 acres to have a detached ADU, kind of thing.
Right, so to come back, you mentioned you'd have to have at least 10 acres.
Yeah, if you're in a 1 to 2 district, though, Andrew, does that mean you'd have to have four acres?
That's correct. Essentially double the, the size of the property to have an ADU.
Yeah, you're just trying to meet the density requirement of the district, right, for a detached ADU. That's the way it's written right now. So, if you're in a 1 to 5, you need 10 acres for a detached. If you're a 1 to 2, you need four acres, so that's how it works.
Unless it's a convert.
That's correct.
Got it, thank you.
Okay, so, speaking of conversion, conversion of family memory unit to an accessory dwelling unit.
Okay, so we kind of took a look at your guys' question. And so we kind of came up with a response, and more or less, our response is, we don't see the idea of conversion as an option for an FMU. FMUs are separately permitted, and they are intended to be temporary residential for family members, but they must be removed once they, the family members either move off the property or the property owner sells the property. FMUs are a mobile and manufactured home, which, under the past meetings, we decided that FMUs could be a qualifying ADU housing type. And so, our kind of direction that we see it is, yes, you can repurpose an AD, sorry, repurpose an FMU, but the FMU would be perceived as a new detached ADU. And so, we would have to more or less just ensure that the property had the necessary density, the necessary acreage to allow for that detached ADU. The, the structure itself would still have to comply with the maximum size requirements outlined within the ADU section. And the same with water and septic, they would still have to comply. We would just see that as a new detached ADU, and the conversion wouldn't apply because it is a standalone permitted residential use type that's already referenced within the ADU section. And the one, obviously the last thing, because this is really where this is coming from. The 1,000 Friends of San Amos County versus San Amos County really kind of laid it in that we could be in a legal issue if we try, if we started to allow essentially mobile homes in these situations to be just converted. So they can be used, but they're gonna be perceived as detached versus a conversion so that we do not run into any legal risk.
So Andrew, in a situation where a parcel did not meet the density requirements for the two little facilities, and it was originally an FMU, because if they didn't have the density, they would have to remove it as soon as the family members went back, they would not be able to convert that to an ADU? Repurpose it as an ADU?
If it didn't meet the necessary density, would not be able to be used. They are, based on the direction of the board, able to maintain the FMU until that family member no longer resides on the property or the property owner sells. So FMU is still an option, it's just, it's with the limitations of an FMU.
Do we know, this might be a really weird piece of data, but do you have any data on how many FMUs are on parcels that would not otherwise meet density?
I do not have that information. I do believe, last time I checked, well, last time I reached out to someone in Development Services, they said there weren't that many FMUs, there were probably about 16 of them. It's not necessarily the biggest, it's not the most sought-after use, I guess you could say. Because I think due to the temporary nature of an FMU.
Fair enough. Thank you.
If, if the family member moves out, but another family member moves in, can they maintain that FMU?
More or less the property. Sorry, say it again?
As long as it's a family member.
Exactly. The property owner signs an affidavit stating that a family member is living within that unit. And so, it can go from the aunt to the niece, to the second niece. Just, it can go, as long as it's family members, it's perfectly legal.
Well, it seems to me, I mean, I like what you did there, that you really don't want to allow just a conversion of one to the other. You could do it the way you said, but you don't want an FMU to be a, a backdoor to be putting in a ADU where it wouldn't otherwise qualify.
Exactly. And so I guess, is there any other questions? Because I do have one additional thing that's not referenced in the memo. And it kind of pertains to this. Under the conversion section, it currently just says the conversion of a structure. And we would like to recommend that the planning commission also recognize and amend that definition to say accessory structure. So it's clearly defined. And there's no confusion down the road, that it is just meant for an accessory structure and not just open-ended for structures. So if.
What's the difference in the definition?
So we, there's the, how we administer it with the Joe Schmo off the street reading it. It can lead to some misunderstandings, and I would imagine some confusion down the road. And so what we want to do is just ensure that there's some clarity, and it's just very clearly defined as accessory structure. So that people know that, when you say structure, is FMU's a structure? So would that be able to be converted? So this is kind of cleaning that up, so that we move forward without any sort of confusion moving forward.
So Andrew, what's the definition of an accessory structure?
An accessory structure is more or less, I have the accessory use, and that's, I don't have the Title 20 accessory structure definition in front of me at this moment. But more or less, an accessory structure would be one that is accessory and subordinate to the principal structure. So you'd see a shed, a garage, things that are not found without the house, kind of. So an FMU would not be that. And so we want to make sure that we don't have that confusion down the road as the code begins to be administered.
So I'm going to ask either you or Jennifer, what's our timeline on this? Do you guys need a decision from us tonight?
Ideally, tonight. And it's because it's not our staff's timeline. The board has set, this is a high priority for them, to bring this to them. And they're getting quite busy this fall with budget. And so, given your agendas moving forward and the board's priorities, we would love to get a final decision tonight. And it sounds like we've gotten all those decisions, except for maybe this last piece we just discussed, so.
Well, and the only reason I ask, because it's after seven.
Okay.
And if this is going to be a twenty minute conversation, I don't want to do it tonight.
I'm ready to do.
Yeah, I think we can get through this right now.
Yeah.
Okay. Who wants to make a motion?
I move that we classify the, the, the structure as an accessory structure in this section versus just a structure.
A second.
Any other discussion? All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and one last thing, just because we haven't done it. Let's get a motion to move forward a recommendation on the accessory dwelling units, as we have amended them tonight.
Still moved.
Second.
Okay, moved and seconded. One last time, any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of recommending development code docket A21 dwelling units with the amendments that were approved tonight, please signify by saying aye. All those opposed? Okay, motion carries. If you would like to testify on any of our open space applications, please go ahead and raise your hand now. And we've got a little opening and a presentation from staff to get through. And as soon as we're done with that, we will move on to the public comment portion. Okay, let's get this going. Okay. Today, we are here to hold a public hearing on open space applications from Veterans Ecological Trade Collective, also known as Vets Cafe. Anna and Tom Boatright, Burdell DeGuys, and Michael Wagar. Public notice of this hearing was published in The Olympian on July 28th, 2020. As I said, if you wish to testify, please click the button to raise your hand. I believe it's star six, if you're calling in.
Star nine.
Star nine, sorry. So each person will have three minutes to testify. I will put, there will be a timer on your screen that you can see. Green is you got lots of time, yellow, I think thirty seconds. And red means that your time is up. And you may submit written testimony until the end of the hearing. So we'll begin with a staff presentation from Chris Waters.
Hi, thank you. I'm Chris Waters, again, with Community Planning. And I will be sharing my screen to show you this presentation. Moment as it comes up here. All right, can you all see this PowerPoint? All right, that should be on all of your screens now. Okay, great. I see some nods. So Thurston County Open Space Program. So I'm just going to run through very quickly, since I know we have a lot on the agenda today, a little bit of background about the Open Space Program and then the applications. So as you all know, it does provide an incentive for landowners to keep their land in an open space state by allowing it to be evaluated at the current use, rather than the highest and best use. As legally, most properties, unless they're in an exemption like this, must be valued for tax purposes at their highest and best use. And I will keep going here. Farm and Agriculture is one of our open space programs. We also have Timberland. A lot of applications that we get come over from the assessors program. If they do not meet certain criteria for farm and agriculture, a lot of times it has to do with the, the money that they're making. So there's a certain criteria for that in the assessors program. So we are going to go through two applications that are under that farm and agriculture that you'll see. We also have programs for Fish and Wildlife Habitat. There is certain classifications underneath the open space as well. You can apply for private recreation area, as well as urban growth area. So if it's an open space area within an urban growth area, it may also qualify. So they must meet all of the criteria in RCW 8434 for open space program. And that, if they do, will have a property tax reduction. And the percentage is based on our public benefit rating system. So just really quickly, the priority resources, such as the farmland, they're given a point value. So three points for a high priority, then two points for medium, and one for low. There is one acre that is usually out of the program because residential structures are not considered open space unless you have over twenty acres. And then there's a home site allowance. My apologies for the kitten yelling. All right, so in the 2020 process, there are four applications. As Commissioner Nelson already went through, we have Boatright, DeGuys, Vets Cafe, and Wagar. So I'll just start going through these applications. Boatright, as you can see here, is a total of eighty-five acres. Forty-five of those acres are proposed for the open space program. Most of those are the wetland areas that you can see. There's a picture example there of one of them. And they are also applying for private recreation area with substantial public access. They already have thirty-six acres in the assessors designated forest land program. And it would be reclassified into our open space, open space program through this application. They are within the city limits, so they would qualify for the urban growth area, open space, automatically being within the city limits of Tumwater. They're also in Percival Creek Corridor Watershed. And it's a special management area that's recognized for its wildlife habitat and other natural resources. So the criteria analysis that I've gone through in these applications, they are eligible for eight points under the public benefit rating system, which would qualify them for a seventy percent reduction in market value. The proposed area meets the eligibility requirements. So it does meet all of those requirements in the public benefit rating system for private recreation and, and as well as the, the urban growth area. So they are proposing substantial access, which would be available on a year-round basis to the public upon arrangement. So this is some of the public access you can see, and some of the natural resources. This is one of the trails in that picture. You can see one of the trails that would be converted into the public access. It is a rather rare open space area within the city limits of Tumwater, near the Black Lake ditch and Black Lake itself does appear to be a very valuable natural resource area for conservation. So staff does recommend approval of the classification of forty-five acres for that seventy percent reduction. The next is DeGuys. It's an eight point three four acres with one acre home site. And the parcel, you can see here, there's that one acre home site. And then the rest is all farm and agricultural land. And so that is coming directly over from the assessors program. So that is one of our more direct type of applications. It's a, the zoning is, sorry, one in twenty. So it's a very rural residential resource. You can see the criteria analysis here. It does qualify for three points under the public benefit rating system, which would give it a fifty percent reduction in market value. It meets those eligibility requirements. So staff does recommend approval of the classification of the seven point three four acres as open space for current use assessment. The next application is Vets Cafe. It's twenty-one point nine six acres. And you can see that triangular section on the left hand there is that area that's proposed. On the right is the entire property for the Veterans Ecological Trade Cafe. And they've got a lot of great programs going on there. And they are applying for private recreation area and significant wildlife habitat with substantial public access. It is within the Chehalis River Watershed and the Scatter Creek Basin, which are both known for their natural resources and conservation value. Northwest portion, as I showed you in that picture, is what they're applying for. And the majority of the parcel is a category one forested wetland. So it's one of the highest categories as far as value in wetlands. And it is also surrounded by Oregon white oak. And it provides habitat for a number of priority species. State sensitive candidate endangered species. They have also shown the entire property is used by some priority species as well for the wildlife habitat for those important species. The resources, you can see some of the pictures of the resources here. On the far right is an example of one of the trails that they would be improving for public access. In the middle is a part of a wetland area, and on the left is a very large oak. So staff does recommend approval of the classification of the twenty-one point nine six acres, qualifying at the seventy percent reduction. The last application here is the Wagar application. Again, it is one of our more straightforward applications. It's coming over from the assessors program. It's twenty point five seven acres with a one acre home site for farm and agriculture. And the zoning is one unit per ten acres. The property, again, is eligible for three points for a fifty percent reduction. And it meets all of the eligibility requirements for farm and agriculture. So staff does recommend the approval of the classification of nineteen point five seven acres as the open space land for current use assessment. And that is, are there any questions?
Since the city of Tumwater is going to be affected by this a little bit, and understanding that they don't have a whole lot of say in it, have they expressed an opinion on it?
They have not. I did not receive any public comment on any of these applications. I do know that they are working with the city of Tumwater. The landowners are working with the city of Tumwater on a number of things, including conservation. But they don't have a program like this.
Thank you.
I guess my two questions are, for the Boatright and the Vets Cafe, they both appear to be over twenty acres. So I'm curious as to why the assessors removed them.
It's based on income. So if they were not making, oh, sorry. Boatright is not, they are not coming from the farm and agriculture assessors program. They actually have open space timber that they did not know about when they bought the property. So they, they are not wanting to continue timber. So they want to reclassify as open space because they want it to be more of a park.
Okay, and the Vets Cafe?
Yeah, the Vets Cafe also had some timber classification as well. And it's, it's kind of the same thing, where they don't want to continue timber operations. They want it to be for educational purposes.
Okay, so the rest of that, the Vets Cafe parcel, what is that?
The, you mean the ones that are not included in the application? The whole, the whole property is used for their educational purposes. So they have all kinds of classes for, for veterans out there. A lot of it has to do with agriculture.
So, yeah, that, that gets to my point. If they're doing, and I don't know the exact rules, but if they're doing an ag use and they've got twenty-two acres, basically, even if they were setting aside an acre for a house, they would have enough acreage to qualify for the assessors program.
Sorry, the twenty-one, almost twenty-two acres is all forested. None of that is. Sorry, the 21, almost 22 acres is all forested. None of that is agriculture currently. It used to be, part of it used to be in timber in the assessors program. So what's in the application is all forested, mostly forested wetland. So it's, it's really not usable for agriculture. The rest of the property is, is for agriculture. And I could show you that aerial again if you'd like.
Yeah, I just, I guess, I was thinking that there was, if there's parcels connected under the same ownership.
Alright, can you see that there? It needs to get bigger.
So the yellow outline is the entire property?
Yes.
And the orange outline is a separate parcel?
Yes, the orange outline is what is in the application.
Okay, so I'm just gonna say this because I need to, because I've been doing this. And to me, this looks like another job of the assessor. Because I believe that with that larger parcel, the entire, both parcels should probably qualify for ag use being over 20 acres. That being said, they're currently applying for this, so I would, I would vote to send them along for approval.
Great. Were there any other comments, questions about any of the other applications?
Personally, I think this is a great program and I've gotten approvals for all of them.
Yep. Do we have any, any testimony?
Jeff, you had your hand up. Did you wish to speak on this?
Yeah, I was just looking for some more clarification because these properties are so big. And I know when we talk agricultural is the definition, basically, I look at it as growing a plant. So let's say on a 40 acre partial, if there's a cannabis farm on it legally permitted, how does that affect everything? Especially with this assessor, because I've seen with the assessor going specifically after cannabis farmers and taxing the hell out of them. So I'm trying to figure out, is there any discrimination that's all happened to a cannabis farmer? Just because one acre out of 40 acres is cannabis, another 39 acres is not. Can they still somehow get a tax deduction and follow in these programs?
I don't believe that cannabis is considered agriculture if it's in a building in our county. I, but that being said, there is nothing that would discriminate against certain agricultural use. You know, it doesn't matter what they're growing. It's an, if it's an ag use, it's an ag use.
Okay, so I'll add, I don't know the answer to that, but it's really not something that's before us tonight. So does anybody else wish to testify? Okay, with that, I will close the public hearing and we can open it up for discussion and our motions.
I, I would move as long, I'd move that we approve all four of them.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded to recommend approval of all of the applications before us tonight. Any other discussion? Hey, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
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 Post. Okay, motion carries. So now, if you wish to speak on the comprehensive plan amendments, I'll ask that you go ahead and raise your hand. And we'll get through our introduction and staff presentation and we'll start calling on you. So tonight, we're holding a public hearing on proposed amendments to Thurston County Comprehensive Plan. This hearing includes proposed amendments to the mineral lands, long-term forestry, parks and health components of the comprehensive plan. This was a virtual public hearing. Those wish to testify, joined by Zoom, phone, emailed in comment or mailed in comment. If you wish to testify, please choose the raise your hand open option. If you're dialing in, press nine to raise your hand. I will call your name and unmute you when it's your turn to speak. Make sure that you also choose star six to unmute yourself. If you have trouble speaking or being heard, please disconnect from the Zoom meeting and call 360-972-6785. Once again, everybody has three minutes. I will call you just in order. Your hands are up on the, on my screen. When you hear your name, please unmute yourself to testify. And your time may not be given to another person. When testifying, please provide your name and address for the record. And again, we will have the public, the timer. Green means you're good, yellow is 30 seconds. And red means that your time is up. So.
We're getting some background noise off Donna's computer, I think. Any way to mute that? Oh, there it goes. I do.
I muted her.
Oh, okay.
Okay, back to where I was. So I will now open the public hearing and we will have a presentation from Maya Tople.
Thanks, Scott. Good evening, Commissioners. Maya Tople, Senior Planner with Community Planning. Today, we are here to hold a public hearing on the proposed amendments to the Thurston County Comprehensive Plan as part of the 2020 Comprehensive Plan Update. This is item CP1 on the 2020, 2021 Official Comprehensive Plan Docket. Thurston County's Comprehensive Plan is the guiding document that lays out how the county will grow and change over the next 20 years. The Comprehensive Plan was first adopted in 1975 and the last major periodic update was adopted in late 2019. A few of those items not finished in 2019 with the periodic update are being considered at this time. And those items include changes to mineral lands, forestry, parks and the health elements. This hearing considers amendments to the following portions of the Comprehensive Plan, Chapters 1, 2, 3, 6, 9 and 11, Appendixes C and D, Maps L1 Future Land Use, Map N1 Long-Term Agriculture and Forestry, Map M43, which is proposed as Map N2 Designated Mineral Lands, Amendments to the Thurston County Code, Chapter 1720, Chapter 1804, Chapter 2003, Chapter 2030B, Chapter 2054 and Chapter 2060, and proposed removal of seven parcels from long-term forestry designation and an associated land use and zoning amendment from long-term forestry to rural residential 1 to 5. The Planning Commission has held multiple work sessions on the proposed amendments being considered tonight. All work sessions were open to the public. Beginning in May of 2017, the Planning Commission held a total of 19 work sessions through today. 14 of those work sessions were on mineral lands and five were on the other topics that are being considered tonight. Additionally, the Planning Commission held a public hearing on the scope of mineral lands back on March 7, 2018. Two community open houses were held that provided general information on the Comprehensive Plan on March 27, 2018 and March 31, 2018. And several presentations were provided to external community groups regarding the proposed amendments. Additionally, a mineral land stakeholder focus group was convened and held 12 meetings to discuss the proposed amendments related to mineral lands. In preparation for this hearing, we had a self-guided virtual open house that was available online beginning on July 24 through tonight. And we did receive quite a bit of positive feedback from the public on that open house and having that available. Written notice for this public hearing was published in the Olympian on July 27, 2020. And in addition to that, a web mail announcement was sent out to the community planning's listserv. The hearing was also advertised in the county's Friday Five newsletter on August 7. And a Facebook post, a Twitter post and a press release was issued on August 10, 2020. A mailer was also sent to all of the properties within 500 feet of the seven proposed land use amendments. And that was sent out on August 3, 2020. And the individual landowners of the seven parcels being considered that we had contact information for were notified by email or phone on July 27, 2020. In addition to being included in the hard mailer that went out. Thurston County Community Planning updated the website with all of the available documents prior to this hearing notice going out. Additionally, community planning provided notice to adjacent jurisdictions of the proposed amendments to resource designations and an opportunity to provide comment, which is consistent with the Washington Administrative Code 365-19040. Now on to the public comment that we received in preparation for this hearing. So because this project has been going on so long and for the purposes of this hearing, staff separated the public comment into two PDFs. The first PDF was all of the comments we received before the hearing notice went out on July 27, 2020. So from 2017, when the project started until right before that hearing notice went out. And the second PDF that was included in the commissioners packets are comments that we received for this public hearing. Both of those are available online for the public to view at Thurston2040.com. So between the start of the project in 2017 to just before the hearing notice went out, we received 242 comments by email or mail. One of those comments was related to the parks update and the other 241 comments were related to the mineral lands update. Many of the mineral lands comments discussed old options or covered past discussions where decisions have already been made. For example, how we define parks for mineral lands designation. The major themes of those comments included maintain the thousand feet in the designation criteria, do not co-designate with long-term ag, concerns over pollution, opposition to the update in general, support of changes to the hydrogeologic code in 1720 TCC, include land trusts in the definition of parks and a range of comments that supported a range of different options. And those options have developed over time as well. The one parks comment that we received in that, in that bucket was requesting a level of service on playgrounds. For this public hearing between July 27, when the hearing notice went out and tonight, staff received 52 comments. 10 of those comments were related to parks. One was related to forestry, 40 related to mineral lands and one was a logistical concern. So I'm going to go through the major themes of those right now. For mineral lands, we received one comment that said no decision should be made until the county is open for business. And then it's inappropriate to place gravel mines in rural residential zoning. We received three comments stating preserve rural character. One comment requesting maintaining the thousand foot separation distance from UGAs. 12 comments that requested to maintain the thousand foot separation distance from parks. Two comments that request that thousand foot separation distance be eliminated from the designation criteria. 13 comments that request to not co-designate long-term forestry and mineral lands. Two comments that request to include land trusts in the parks definition. 24 comments, this was our largest topic that we received, that request supported option A1, which is to not co-designate long-term agriculture and mineral lands. Six comments were in support of option A2, which is the co-designation of long-term agriculture and mineral lands. Six comments supported option C1, which maintains the current language of a thousand foot resource use notice for plats. Two comments support option C2, which changes the resource use notice to 500 feet for plats. Six comments were in support of option D1, which would only allow expansion of mines onto designated lands. Five comments were in support of option D3, which is a stakeholder developed expansion option that would allow expansion onto undesignated lands or in certain cases, new operations to occur within that thousand foot area. Five in support of option E2, which states if any amount of a parcel is mapped as designated, then the whole parcel is eligible for a permit process. Five in support of option E3, which states the whole parcel must be mapped in order to be permitted. Two suggested code changes. And moving on to the other topics that we received comments on, we got one for forestry that suggested looking into alternative zones such as rural 1 to 10 or rural 1 to 20. And 10 comments on parks that were in opposition to the proposed park site at Spooner Farms. And that more parks are welcome, but not at the cost of agricultural lands. So for those 10 park comments, staff did respond to all of those comments and note that that's, that's not part of the Comprehensive Plan update of the City of Olympia project and directed those folks to the appropriate place to get their comments in with the city. So that concludes my comments. That summary will be included in your packet for the next work session. So that was a lot of information, but I will break that down at the next work session as well.
Okay, let's go start this. Again, remember three minutes. I will put the timer so you can see it on your screen. And especially now that we're doing this online, please make sure to let us know who you are because sometimes people sign in on somebody else's account. So with that being said, we're going to start with, or start with Loretta.
Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. I'm going to talk about the mineral lands topic and I have two requests from you. One is I am in requesting that we keep two option A1, which is the status quo on co-designation. So there would be no co-designation. I'm doing that because we are just now starting this 2020, 21 Thurston County Community Driven Review of Agriculture Policies and Programs. And I've been working with a few people on things that we've learned from new research that's just out, American Farmland Trust. I think we're going to have more nuanced way of looking at the A2 option when we finish that study. So I'm asking that we simply keep the status quo, A1, and let that study go on. And then we maybe be able to do an A2 or a modified A2. So that's my first request. My second request is that we change map N2. Map N2 is called the mineral lands map, but it really is about mineral lands and its overlap with agricultural lands. But the current map shows us just the mineral lands and just the, all of the mineral lands, but only the parts of long-term ag land that overlaps. And online, the staff has made available a map where you can look at not only where it overlaps, but you can see all of the ag land in that particular area. That's helped me to understand the A2 option in a more nuanced way. I think it helped me think about a better, think about this policy in a better way. So I'm suggesting that the N2 map contain both the, all of long-term ag land, some of which will be irrelevant, and all of the mineral lands. And that you'll be able to make better policy decisions that way now and in the future. Cause that will be in the comp plan forever. And I provided one example in Bucauda on what I sent in today. So you can see how it helped me see a different story when I could see them both. Thank you for listening to those two requests.
Okay. Castle M.
Thank you. My name is Mary Castle with Warehouse Company. I have been working on the stakeholder group and want to thank Maya and staff and all the group for all the work and time that they've put into this. Just a few quick points, I submitted written comments, but I wanted to verbally just make a few points. Just remember that designation is not a permit. Even though you have a mineral lands designation, you still have to go through many, many steps in order to get a permit. There were several comments around opposing a mineral lands overlay on forest lands. However, that's already been approved and not up for revision in this, in this update. So I just wanted to clarify that. And then there's also been a lot of comments around the impacts on groundwater and using that as a reason for continuing to have the thousand-foot setbacks. The thousand-foot setbacks are an arbitrary distance. Many lands have really specific geologic characteristics that may or may not impact how groundwater and surface water moves from those sites. This really needs to be a site-specific consideration. In Thurston County, you have a lot of compacted glacial till that is not very permeable and that should be a site-specific consideration on the groundwater movement. Sites that discharge to groundwater or off-site have to go through a permit process with ecology to get a NPDES permit before they can discharge into groundwater or surface water. I think that should be considered in this because it's already a requirement by another agency. That is a National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. And you can go to Ecology's website and their definition of that permit is that this permit will have limits on what you can discharge, reporting requirements. And they have other provisions to ensure that the discharge does not hurt water quality or people's health. That is a quote from their definition of the NPDES permit. So that is also a public notification and comment period permit. So people will have a chance to comment on that. So those were the points. Thank you.
Okay, Steve.
All right, I think you guys can hear me. So my name is Steve Hitzel with Granite Construction Company at 320113th Ave., Southwest Olympia. I also submitted written comment and just wanted to emphasize a few points. Mary hit on a few of them, you know, there's a pretty extensive permitting process that comes after this overlay where this will, we're not going to see mines popping up all over the county based on these updates to the comprehensive plan that you guys are looking at today. That's kind of the first point. The second point is we've gone through the identification and classification. And right now we're designating and conserving. And then after this process comes that permitting, so that all comes together. And then in addition, in my written comment, I just want to bring your attention to a proposed change in the language referring to option D3, Section 1E. That has to do with operator donated area to create a public park or preserve. Instead of allowing a single operator to expand into areas that are being, expanding into areas where that thousand-foot buffer may exist, allow any operator who may have a mine in that area also go into that thousand-foot buffer. The main reason for that is mineral resources appear in strains essentially where good quality material, you'll have multiple operators there. And I just want to make sure that we don't have inadvertent consequences where one operator donates some land and then it impacts someone else's businesses. So that's all I have to say. Thank you guys for your time and going through this. Appreciate all the work that the Commissioners and planning staff have done on this. Thank you.
Okay, we've only got a couple left, so I'll remind everybody if you would like to speak, please raise your hand if you were calling in. Choose star nine to raise your hand and we'll move on to JD Essig.
Hello, this is James Essig with Granite Construction Company and current president of the Washington Aggregate and Concrete Association. I just want to emphasize one point regarding the thousand-foot buffers that are being considered here for the UGA and distance from parks. We've been watching this here over the few years that we've developed this language. I haven't witnessed or been aware of any science that basing these buffers on that thousand feet is totally arbitrary. And I want to speak in opposition to adopting any 1,000-foot buffers regardless of what it is without having some science to justify that. These items will be looked at at the permitting phase. We're just trying to designate where the mineral lands are and, and secure them for the future. Thank you.
Okay, Ryan.
Testing, testing, you there?
I can hear you.
All right, I'm Ryan Rand Savage with Miles Sand and Gravel. Thank you guys for having this comment period. I want to speak to just kind of more of the, go back to the geology a little bit. That's my favorite part of this subject. Geology is pretty nuanced, especially in this area. The sand and gravel deposits specifically are really well-tested and vetted. There's a study from 1911 by one of the first geologists for the state, a gentleman named Brettz. And he was one of the first to identify sand and gravel. And so there's a huge backlog of information over 100 years of testing to support construction aggregates from sand and gravel. And the bedrock, I don't want to say it's worse, it's just untested. So to lump those two together in the designation and kind of treat them equally, I just want everyone to be aware that there is a material difference there. The sand and gravel is very well-understood. Most of these new facilities in terms of aggregate quality is how well it's going to hold up over time is well-known. If there's a transition to the bedrock-type material, that's less well-known. So we're in favor of designating as much sand and gravel deposits as possible. That includes co-designation. The other part of that is the compiled information from the beginning of the study had a variable initial quality. You know, that line on the map of where the sand and gravel starts and stops is only so accurate. So we are in favor of if a portion of the parcel has mineral lands overlay, the entire parcel should be included. I just want to note too, that's the, a lot of that information's generated off of surface geology. So if there's another really skinny or small layer over the sand and gravel, it's going to be mapped at that smaller layer, not necessarily sand and gravel. So that's just what, that is just mapping the surface geology. And I know ASI went further and more in-depth on that, but there is some legacy information there. I want to reiterate a couple of points that Mary Castle made as well. This is just to allow for the permit. So after the mineral resource overlay is determined, we still have to go in for a conditional use permit. And at that phase, a detailed hydrogeologic report, noise study, any of the traffic impact analysis at that point, those issues can be addressed in a very detailed and important way. And then before I run out of time, it is important to designate just as economics drive, you know, cost of living is going up and up. Cost of development's also increasing. So having the ability to support development with local aggregate deposits is good for the growth of Thurston. And then every five years for the Department of Ecology's NPDS, National Pollution Discharge Elimination Permit, for through the last five-year cycle, which was 2016 to 2021, the state compliance for sand and gravel was 97%. So with a good track record of being environmentally compliant and that's actually being revised every five years, it's revised and a revision is ongoing right now. Thank you.
Okay, Mark Hancock. Unmute. Okay. Let me quiet the others. Thank you. My name is Mark Hancock, representing Sagali Properties, PO Box 88028, Tuckahilla, Washington 98138. We own gravel property in the center of the county, some under permit now, and we hope to take out the balance over time in the future. Thank you to staff, Commissioners, and the public for these many years of work to get us to this point. Much has been sorted out, but a few issues remain that I wish to speak to tonight. First, we ask your support for mineral lands options C1, D3, and E2. C1 keeps the current code notice for nearby plat developments and E2 allows the most flexibility in determining mineral lands. D3 is the most important one to us as it addresses situations where the thousand-foot setback should not apply. Option D3 was a compromise agreed to by the majority in the most recent community stakeholder group meetings. It allows existing mines to expand into the thousand-foot setback where it doesn't serve a purpose. In particular, within the thousand feet, there may be existing barriers such as roads, railroads, and industrial uses. A thousand feet is nearly a quarter mile, so a lot can be present there. When those things are there, the thousand feet serves no purpose at all. I'd like to repeat that the thousand-foot setback is random, arbitrary, and not based on science or the actions of the proposed operation or the conditions of the adjacent lands. It is extreme, three and a half football fields and long with no basis for that. The history, you've asked about the history of this thousand feet and you know it goes back a while. We were there. It's not a mystery. And if you read our letter, we tell you about the history. It takes a little too long right now, so be sure and read that. It was not an agreement, it was not a compromise by that stakeholders group. There was definitely a variety of opinions. It was simply a matter of who had the most votes that night. It has no basis of any sort, it's random. We have also submitted a letter from our lawyer outlining to you the law why we believe that this thousand-foot setback is illegal and will not hold up in the courts. We think the county should be seriously looking at that. I would recommend that you ask for the county to state its position on this to you. We also submitted a letter with our more details of what I've just talked about. Thanks very much for all your time in this complicated matter. We really appreciate it a lot. Thank you.
Okay, we have a call-in user.
That was probably me.
Hi, this is Kristy White calling from the Delphi Valley. Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
We got you.
Okay, great, thank you. I wanted to comment on the comprehensive plan, the mineral lands here this evening. As I've said before, and I'll say it again, I think that this proposal is really aggressive and irresponsible. I mean, to go from 5,000 or less acres to well over 130,000 in one fell swoop with one inventory that was taken by one consultant really is not a balanced approach to the mineral lands issue. As I listened to the previous speakers, I wanted to point out that yes, designation pretty much equals permit. As a local citizen, once you get into permitting stage, you have a very limited time, very limited to try and respond to what is going on next door to your property. The financial burden to fight a mining company, you can't do it as a citizen. So I think that we really need to look at how these mineral lands are balanced in terms of meeting the needs of the residents of the county who pay the property taxes. As to the thousand-foot buffer, whether it's considered illegal or not, it is a protection. Going in a swath of such a low number of mineral lands to this extraordinary, there is so much volume now that is available to the mining companies. You've got enough, you know, keep the thousand-foot buffers. They are important to stay. The other thing I wanted to, if we're going to go forward with this, which I hope there's some more reconsideration of it, that options A1, C1, D1, and E3 are the most conservative and most protective, yet still allow the mining companies to harvest mineral lands and still get a lot more than what they previously had access to. So you know, there's a continued diminishment and depletion, and I put this in my written comments as well, by this level of swing that are taking away from the rural character and environment that is such a gem in Thurston County. I ask you, let's find that compromise. So thanks for listening tonight and thank you staff. I know what a long journey this has been and I know Maya and her team has worked really, really hard on it. So thank you.
Okay, Phyllis Farrell.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thank you for your work on this topic. I am a resident of unincorporated Thurston County, but I also chair the local South Sound Sierra Club Group representing 2,400 members. And regarding the 1,000-foot separation distance, the environmental community strongly advocates preserving the thousand-foot separation in order to protect critical habitats, water quality, and availability and the public interest. I'd like to refer you to the Future Wise Letter of March 28, 2018, which discusses critical areas and how it is a requirement to protect critical areas against conflicts with use of agricultural forests and mineral resource lands designated under the RCW 3670A.170. We are opposed to determining the separation distance at the permit process because it would place an undue burden on the public, especially neighbors of a project, to monitor permit applications and adequately prepare for hearings. The growth management boards have no jurisdiction over the permit process during appeals, so adequate separation distance is needed to be formalized in the language of the comp plan in order to protect water quality and availability, critical habitats, and public interest. The mining interests believe the thousand-foot number is arbitrary and not based on science. It appears to be a compromise number that applies to most situations for environmental and public interest reasons. It seems better to have a generous protective separation distance from industrial activity. And I'd also like to refer you to Future Wise Letter of March, or excuse me, February 4th, 2019, which discusses the guidance and recommendations of the assessment of environmental factors from Australia. And it discusses the recommendation of 1,000-foot separation between extractive industries. So the thousand-foot number could be based on best practices. So thank you for your work on this topic and we appreciate all of the time and effort involved in the staff, the stakeholders groups. And but please maintain that 1,000-foot separation. This comp plan is going to be operational for years to come and your words matter. Thank you.
Okay, that's all the people with their hands up. One last chance. If you'd like to speak, put your hand up and I'll call on you. Okay, I don't see any hands. So I do know that we had one person who wished to testify, who was not able to. And I don't know if they submitted public comment or not. I have not seen it yet. Does staff know?
If you're speaking about Mr. Durker, who was also trying to speak during public comment, he did submit a public comment just yesterday on this topic. And I believe Maya, did you not get forwarded to the planning commission? And I believe, Maya, did you not get forwarded to the planning commission?
Yes, that would have been included in the public comment packet.
I think it was Esther Cronenberg and Jerry Durker were the names on it.
Oh, I guess with that, I will close the public hearing, and we will open it up for discussion. And I want to start with, I know what Mr. Durker was attempting to say, so I want to address it. He has some concerns about, I don't know if anybody specific, but planning commissioners' participation and the appearance of fairness doctrine.
You're muted, Scott.
I know. I'm trying to do two things at once here. Okay. So the appearance of fairness doctrine does not apply to legislative actions. And just for the record, I'm going to read it here. It's RCW 42.36.001. Oh, wait. Yeah, that's it. Quasi judicial actions do not include legislative actions adopting, amending, or revising comprehensive community or neighborhood plans on or other land use planning documents, or the adoption of area-wide zoning ordinance, or the adoption of a zoning amendment that is of area-wide significance. So that is the RCW. I'm actually reading it from MRSC. So in case anybody, just so we have that covered, I wanted to make sure. So now I'll open it up. Does anybody else have any questions or comments for staff?
I actually have a PowerPoint to walk through if that's helpful for the commission. There were a few follow-up items and questions I got from commissioners, and then we can have a broader discussion on all the public comment we had and continue that at the next meeting, if that sounds good to folks. Yeah, so I will share my screen. It's super short. Are you guys seeing my PowerPoint?
I see.
Yes.
Great. Sorry, it's hard with multiple screens. It can get a little bit confusing. So... So one thing I wanted to bring your attention to. Staff found an error in the public hearing drafts, and I just wanted to call this out on the record. So in the special use permit table 2054, this is Table 1 in 2054, we had previously put an X in the AOD overlay district stating that mineral extraction can occur in that district. And this is actually, this actually doesn't need to be here. So it was incorrect interpretation of what the AOD, which is the Agritourism Overlay District, actually does. I was back in the AOD section of the zoning code, looking for something different, and read in that code language that the AOD does not restrict uses further. So it only adds additional uses that are not already permitted in the other underlying zoning, which means that in areas where this overlaps with the underlying zoning, this X doesn't need to be here for mineral extraction to occur. It would just be subject to the underlying layer. We're requesting on the record that the planning commission provide direction to staff to remove this X as a cleanup measure and for clarification. That was one thing I wanted to correct. I was hoping to get this in a formal motion. I have the text on the screen if anyone feels comfortable with that. But we can have a discussion around it if folks have questions.
I guess, I mean, my question is, it's there. I don't know that we need to make the change. If, I mean, if it's going to be allowed, because I'm afraid it's probably going to happen anyways. But we're afraid if we take that out, then somebody's going to apply for a permit, and somebody's going to say, oh, well, that's not allowed in AOD.
So part of the issue with keeping it in AOD is if it's not allowed in the other underlying zone, if the AOD overlay is that, then this X would essentially permit it there. So it's inconsistent with the underlying zoning. The AOD also overlays urban growth areas and the cities. So that's inconsistent with what's in the designation criteria.
Okay, that makes more sense then. Anybody want to make a motion? Want some more discussion?
I'll move that we remove the X on Table 1 for AOD.
Second.
Proper wording, Maya?
That's perfect. Thank you, Doug.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any other discussion on this piece? All those in favor of approving the change which removes the X under AOD in Table 1 of 2054? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, what's next?
Great. So this is a commissioner comment. I did receive by email a comment from a commissioner requesting a change to one of the policies in the health chapter. And I have Chris Hawkins here from Public Health and Social Services to just talk about that. The request was to eliminate the types of groups that are specified in the policy. And Chris, I'm just going to let you jump in here and take this one.
Certainly. Thank you, Maya and commissioners. I wanted to address a comment. This, I think, came from Commissioner DeHan, going back to a question that he had prior to your July 1 meeting about one of the policies in the Goal 1, which is about access to health services under Objective A, which is that the county should increase access to appropriate medical behavioral... Oh, sorry, today. Somebody want to say something? And then on Policy Number 7 there, the county, it states that the county should support efforts to reduce health disparities relating from differential access to care among residents who include, who are children, low income, and identify as LGBTQ. And the comment from Commissioner DeHan, or the suggestion, is to remove their reference to specific groups from this policy statement. The Public Health and Social Services wanted to recommend that we retain the original wording of the policy. That is language that we intentionally have there as the original version of this policy. It is a new policy for the comprehensive plan. It relates to findings from our community health assessment of 2019. And as you saw earlier in the chapter, there's a reference to a focus on health equity as an important aspect of public health. Health equity includes the need to identify groups with disparities that require significant action to close that equity gap. And on this specific policy, there are three priority populations that our data identifies. And that's what the assessment conducted just last year found. That's been reviewed and accepted by the Thurston Thriads Community Health Improvement Initiative. We've also been sharing that data with regional healthcare coordination entity called the Cascade Pacific Action Alliance. And those groups have accepted these findings. So we want to make sure that there is the acknowledgement and reference to those specific groups, if at all possible. And I wanted to point out, too, that in other policy bullets under this goal, we do specifically identify other groups where there is a disparity or a differential. That includes low-income persons, rural residents, unhoused residents, et cetera. So we would like to keep that specificity. It does help us toward our intention of addressing health equity. Thank you.
So is there any discussion on this commissioner request for policy language change?
Well, from my perspective, the way it's written, it looks like it's limiting. It just doesn't mention any group other than those three. And I think that if it's going to be applicable, it ought to be applicable to all residents of the county.
What's the downside of removing it?
Well, it would be, it would make it less responsive to the health assessment that we just conducted, where we're starting to try to address that health equity goal of really allowing us to focus our efforts on groups that do have, do experience disparities either in care or in health outcomes. And so this is the goal where we're talking about that availability of healthcare, access to healthcare and health services. But it is important to acknowledge and specifically mention groups. We may be able to, in response to Commissioner DeHan and his comments, we may be able to make the language more inclusive here, to refer to... Yeah, we could make that language to say, among all residents, and especially those who are children, low income, or identify as LGBTQ, as a way to say that it obviously, access to care is important across our whole population and for all residents. And we are aware of some disparities here or some differential access for these particular groups. I don't know if that would solve it from your perspective. And I would point out that our Director of Public Health and Social Services is on the call, is on the phone if you want some direct response from her about any of this.
Would you also include those people who are homeless and the people who are physically disadvantaged? And it just seems that it kind of limits the ability to go ahead and identify those with differential care.
Well, I would say it doesn't, it doesn't limit or diminish our attention to groups that are showing up in the data as experiencing those disparities or having differential access. These are the ones that the data has identified as being, experiencing those differences, at least in the access to care realm. These are the top three groups as far as where we need to be putting some focus. As you can see in some of those other policies, different areas of health services, there are some other groups that are identified there, and those are the ones that the data supports being focused on in those different policy areas. So for this, for this particular policy, it is really children and low income and LGBTQ identifying residents who are the ones experiencing that, that highest level of disparity.
Chris?
Go ahead.
Okay, thanks, Ed. On this, is there a possibility that by mentioning these specific groups in a policy that at some point down the road, we would be more eligible for grants or other funding because we've made this a policy goal? So maybe, you know, the state's handing out some money for kids, low income, or people that identify as LGBTQ. But since we already said that's a policy of ours, we'd be a priority receiver of those funds?
I think that's a fair comment, that this does lend some credence to Thurston County paying attention to some known disparities. And that can be helpful in terms of getting resources to address those disparities. I think that's a, that's a fair comment. I don't know specifically whether we do have access to any funds that would certainly serve that.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to hold your feet to the fire like there's certain money out there already in mind. But just, does it leave our door wider open for funding if we identify these specific groups?
It does help. Certainly would help to be more specific here.
Well, Michael, I mean, obviously it sounds like you, the community health assessment, looked at where there were health disparities and identified certain groups here. I mean, I think it's probably covered whether we have that language in or not. But I just wanted to make a general comment. I know I can't do anything about it, but I made it before. This is an example of why I do not think that this thing should be in the comprehensive plan. But I mean, I think that your agency, they do a community health assessment with the people that know a lot more about it than we do. I don't understand why we're here reviewing the work, that work, when it's not really the purpose of the original purpose of comp plans. But that's just my opinion.
And I will add that we do update the comprehensive plan regularly. So if new information comes out and this needs to be revised, we can definitely do that in the future. It's not, it's not a hard and fast. But generally, when policies in the comp plan exist that support, it can support grant applications, they can support funding or programs. Definitely, when you put in grant applications, it's helpful to be able to have policies that support something that you're applying for. So... Other discussion on this? I haven't, I haven't heard any formal direction. I did hear Chris offer a suggestion to broaden this to be a little bit more inclusive to all residents.
While retaining the specific references to those groups that are experiencing disparities, yes.
I just, I mean, I think if we can do something that broadens it, or, you know, something that puts, you know, like in a lot of cases on land use, we put this, this, you know, people or properties are okay for this. But, you know, we say but not limited to, and give examples. Because as Eric pointed out, you know, maybe this makes us eligible for something. But, you know, maybe in a couple of years, these things have changed. And all of a sudden, because we don't mention somebody, then we're not eligible for that extra money.
Good point.
Chris, if this wasn't here, wouldn't you guys still focus on these three groups? I mean, I just think this, this statement belongs in your department, not in the, not in this policy statement in the comp plan.
The first part of your comment or question was, would we continue to work on the, yes, we would. We would follow the data.
Right. So it's not needed here in order to do that. I just, I have a problem generally singling out specific groups. Because when you do that, it's, you know, it's, I just don't think it's appropriate. Yes, you can apply it that way because the data shows that you should. But for us in the comp plan to say, be that specific, I don't think is appropriate.
So I've heard from two commissioners that they would be supportive of broadening this to refer to all residents. And PHS is still supportive of keeping that, especially these groups. So anyone else have comments on this?
I would support some language like that where it's all-inclusive. And if you could specify, you know, make these a little bit more, I don't know how you would do that. But like what Scott was saying last week, where, but it just, it just seems like you're leaving out a bunch of the people when I, the population, when I read it. It's like you're focusing on these three, which I understand you need to do that, and they are the top three. But what about all the rest? Just seems like they should be part of the language.
So we will work on that language and include a little bit of a broader reference in the Planning Commission recommendation draft for this. a little bit of a broader reference in the planning commission recommendation draft for this. So, Chris, you have any final words on this?
No, just thank you very much commissioners for your attention to the importance of this chapter. And I think it's a much improved chapter from the previous edition. And I really appreciate the work of not only the commission, but community planning staff, long range planning to to get this in good shape. We've gotten a lot of, a lot of Ts crossed and Is dotted in the last couple of months. And it's, it's really good product at the end of it. I appreciate it.
Shelley, you have anything you'd like to add?
No, as do I. Just thank you so much for considering this. And I really appreciate the board's commitment to inclusivity and also for your consideration of how meaningful it is to identify these as priorities for our community.
Thank you. So those were the two main items that I, specific items that I had that I wanted to talk about. Now, any other discussion on public comments that you heard? Or topics you want to gear up? So we do have some time on this for the September 2nd meeting. I will try to tune in for that meeting, but I'll be on vacation. So other, other topics you want to tune in from what you heard tonight?
It's, it's not a new topic, but I, is there more information on the effect of the thousand foot buffer? That seems like the big deal. I don't know if there's some kind of study about that or something. And maybe I just missed it. So that's what I would like to hear more about.
Right. And I can look back at a little bit of the history of that. We do have a memo that was previously submitted to the board that I'm more than happy to attach for the next work session. But that, that thousand foot is existing criteria in the designation criteria. And going back all the way to 2017, the board directed staff to update the map of mineral lands based on the existing designation criteria. So that thousand feet area from parks and UGAs was already in that criteria. Staff went forward at that direction. We talked about the scope for close to a year and a half with the planning commission and the board. And ultimately, the planning commission recommended not, not opening up that designation criteria. And the board concurred in 2018. So with the exception of the co-designation of agricultural lands, the map is based on what's already existing in chapter three. But the, the history of that separation distance, that thousand feet is a lot of what you've heard tonight. So it was, you know, you had some people who wanted 50 feet and some people who wanted 3,000 feet. And that was the middle point that they landed on. So we can, staff is more than happy to provide some more history on that with the next work session, but without having that in front of me, that's about the level of detail I can go into. I will say that there's a lot of public comments on both sides. The industry is pretty adamant of removing that thousand foot from the designation criteria. Option V3, which allows for expanding in that thousand feet. And in some cases, new operations to occur within that thousand feet. Has, was kind of the compromise option that was developed in the stakeholder group. So that allows the industry to have some flexibility. To apply for a permit within that thousand feet, even though it's not a designated mineral land. The other side of it is the environmental group and the citizens of Thurston County are pretty adamant in retaining that thousand feet. We've also had several comments from the cities that are supportive of retaining that thousand feet. So those are the two camps that we have on both sides of that issue.
Thanks, Maya. I look forward to, to getting that report from you, but maybe I can get a little smarter on it.
Okay, does anybody else have anything for Maya?
So at the next work session, we, we will talk about this a little bit more, give you some time to digest all of the public comments you heard. And I'll provide a PowerPoint summary just that just breaks down those comments visually and at the planning commission's discussion and depending on their discussion, we'll be moving towards the next meeting or the following meeting after that. So.
Okay, thanks, Maya. Like staff updates.
Hello commissioners. This will be quick. I do have one update. It relates to the Shoreline Master Program, which is still out there. And this gives you a little bit of homework. So if you'll recall, the August 5th meeting, staff let you know that they updated the public comment webpage on the Shoreline Master Program website. And that site contains, you were provided the links and we've continued to maintain and update that site. It has several documents. Including the really large public comment matrix that holds a summary of comments received since October 2017 on the Shoreline Master Program and all its iterations. And staff worked with that matrix to update it and create it to be a searchable Adobe PDF. So you can actually search for a keyword or a person. And so I think it's a little bit easier now to navigate for you. And I know some of you wanted that capacity and you can do that. So I would like to ask you that between now and the September 2nd meeting. Where we'll have some time to talk about the SMP. If you could go in and review those comments to the best of your ability and get as familiar as you, you know, have time to with that history of public comment. And then bring to the September 2nd meeting. Anything you feel like we haven't responded to in our draft that we need to tweak in our draft, reflect in our draft in a new and different way. So that's the homework. I know it's a lot. But there has been so much comment, you've heard it almost every meeting. So I want to honor, you know, the public energy they put into this and, and give that some space for us to think, okay, before we put out our planning commission public hearing draft, let's do another check on what the comment has told us and how we want to respond. So that's the homework. That's the update. And I don't have anything else.
Will you, will you send us the link to that?
Sure, I can resend it. It was sent out, I believe, on the August 5th step, but I will have Andy send you all through Polly that link tomorrow.
Thank you.
Also, there were a number of issues that Andy was getting with ecology on to get answers back for significant sections. Has that been done so that, I mean, because a lot of the questions or some of the questions anyway, related to those sections?
So I'll have Andy, I'll let him know that you had that comment and I'll let him come on September 2nd. And let him know that you want to see that relationship. I know he's been working with ecology still throughout this month. On some of those follow ups. So he'll have more information for you on that in a second. Jennifer, do you want to add about questions regarding RAP and the county hydrogeologist?
Thank you, Maya. That was my other update. What would I do without you? You do have two guest speakers that are going to come on September 2nd, one representing. I'm still waiting for some confirmations actually, but there should be a speaker from Niskuale River Council as you requested. And there will be a speaker from Lakeside as you requested to come and do some Q and A with you on the recycled asphalt proposal. Our hydrogeologist though, we would prefer that if you have questions related to hydrogeology or technical questions that you put those in writing. And we can provide those to him for a written response that we can then bring back to you on the second. So when I email you or Polly, you'll get email from Polly probably tomorrow. I'll make that reminder as well. It'll have the link to the Shoreline Master Program public comment page and a reminder to please submit prior to, well, a few days prior to September 2nd. Questions, specific technical questions you have for our hydrogeologist and he can submit those back in writing and we'll bring those to you on the second, or it's, it's complex, he needs a little more time, we can do it at a subsequent meeting.
I, I think that, you know, my concern with that was that I obviously wanted to hear from both Lakeside and from Niskuale River Council, but the idea with having the county SME there is where are we hearing the truth in this? Now, I'm sure that there's perspective on everything, but to I, I would like to be able to bounce the stuff from NRC and Lakeside against the county to see what his perspective is on their perspective.
Well, I think that would be, then that sounds like the timing works out better to have your discussions with Lakeside and NRC. And then from those discussions, develop some questions for our hydrogeologists to, to work with. To have him referee live is not the best use of time. So I think that that makes a lot of sense to me too, Eric. So let's have that. And so don't worry about, I mean, if you have questions now, go ahead and send them in. You can send them directly to me if you'd like. But what we want to do is make sure that all your questions are answered that are technical about the aquifer and hydrogeologic impacts. I know that's where it is. So let's, yeah. After you have that discussion with Lakeside and NRC, we'll bring some questions to our hydrogeologist. That makes sense.
Death match. That's great.
Okay. Any other questions for Jennifer?
Jennifer, we'd asked some time back, I don't know whether you gave us the answer, but about email addresses. So we could, instead of using our personal emails, use a county email or something that so, you know, so our emails aren't, can't, wouldn't be subject to a public information request.
Yes, um, we have been having those conversations with IT and it's been slow. So let me circle back with our operations manager and see where we are with that.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to attendance. Is there anybody that is not available on September 2nd? Okay, is there anybody that's not available on September 16th?
Unquestionable on the 16th.
Scott, I think on the second, I'll be out of town. I apologize.
Yeah, I think also I won't be in town at that time. In that day, we'll be away.
Okay.
You should be available there on the 16th.
Yeah, just.
If I, I'll be out of town, but if I can find an internet site, I will be, I can still zoom in on the 16th.
Okay. So does anybody else have anything for the good of the order? Okay. According to my clock, it's 8:36 and we're adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.